Good evening. Do I have a motion to open the November 18th, 2025, regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Valerie, would you please do a roll call?
Kelly Cozza?
Here.
Kelly Mulvaney-Mackenney.
Jennifer Blaskin.
Here.
Jennifer Berber.
Here.
Robert C. Selvin Jr.
Jerome Valencia.
Here.
And Gabrielle Condon.
Here.
Please don't fire it just in front of Valerie.
Thank you, Valerie. Do I have a motion to recess into executive session? We have teacher, personnel, and contractual matters to discuss.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. We are recessed. Do I have a motion to reopen the November 18th, 2025, regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Valerie, would you please do a roll call?
Sure. Kelly Cozza?
Here.
Kelly Mulvaney-Mackenney.
Jennifer Blaskin.
Jennifer Berber.
Here.
Robert C. Selvin Jr.
Jerome Valencia.
Here.
And Gabrielle Condon.
Please don't fire it just in front of Valerie.
Thank you, Valerie. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. We have one set of minutes from the November 5th, 2025, regular business meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At this time, if any member of the public would like to address the board for public participation, you may do so by approaching the podium. And if you do, please state your first and last name. But it does not appear that we have any public participation in that form this evening. Okay, moving on to my update, which I will run through quickly because we have some very exciting guests here this evening. But I wanted to let the community know that our LMK Drama Club students take the stage this weekend, performing Roald Dahl's James and the Giant Peach Jr. Tickets are available through Ticket Leap with a link available on our district website, and purchasing tickets in advance is strongly recommended. The performances are this Friday, November 21st at 7:00 p.m., Saturday, the 22nd at 7:00 p.m., and Sunday, the 23rd at 2:00 p.m. We had our high school senior, Mary Grace Crozier and Sophia Campos. They're traveling to Rochester the first week of December to perform in the All-State Treble Chorus at the annual NISMIA conference. Only 800 All-State Ensemble members are selected from more than 6,300 students who auditioned across the state, reflecting this exceptional skill and hard work. I don't know why this is echoing a little bit, but they were exceptional skill and hard work, both our students and their teachers missed Meg Test. So we are very proud of everybody.
We didn't clap?
Yeah. Mary Grace and Sophia will work with a nationally renowned conductor and perform at Eastman School of Music's famous Kodak Hall. So we're very excited from them, and congratulations on this exceptional feat. So this year also, in regards to the Italian-American Heritage Cultural Month, we had five students from both Harrison High School and Lewis M. Klein, and they were recognized for their achievement in performance and interest in Italian studies. So the students honored were Dominique Ventriglio, who's a senior, Seraphina Blackman, a sophomore, Eliana Citro in eighth grade, and Vito Luongo, also in eighth grade. These students, along with their teachers Cindy Martinez and Dana Jagobowski, Christina Palma, and Aurora Russo, were recognized at a ceremony on Monday, October 27th, at Eastchester High School. So in addition to their recognition awards, Brianna DeVito received a scholarship from ACE and Dico Food Service Company that awarded 12 scholarships to students from across Westchester County. So congrats to all of our Italian heritage students. And I just, I love that it spans from seniors down to eighth grade. Like, that's awesome. I love it. We also had students at the high school and LMK who organized some wonderful community service, Thanksgiving's Food Drives, to support the Harrison Food Pantry. And our Harrison High School Youth Volunteers of Harrison Club collected food at De Chico's and assembled gift baskets. And the LMK Service Club, they worked hand in hand, and they organized a school-wide food drive. So I love the kids giving back, especially in this time of year with so many in need, and sometimes we don't even realize that it's our neighbors. Our Harrison High School Marching Band performed in honor of our community's Veterans and Veterans Day Ceremony. Two of our high school students also participated. Tessa Marsco sang the National Anthem and "God Bless America," and Jackson Colasacco, a student at LMK, shared a heartfelt personal reflection about growing up as a son of veterans. His mom and dad, as well as many relatives, have served in the military. So that was a super meaningful day for our veterans as well. Big congratulations to the Harrison High School Debate Team on a great performance at the NYCFL Bronx Tournament this past weekend, November 15th. Paige Bianchini was the varsity champion and top speaker, and Stella Unai, Liam Twomey, Ashley Cho, and Zoe Bernstein all had winning records. So congrats to the debate team. And I love, these are some new names, because every single year, there's always so much about our debaters, and I think there's some of these, like, new and rising, upcoming
talent. Yeah, you've got a whole bunch of babies here.
Yeah. I also wanted to let the community know that the high school guidance department is hosting FAFSA completion sessions for seniors and their families on November 14th and the 20th, and a flyer with registration information was emailed to all 12th-grade families. Financial aid counselors will be available to answer questions and support families in completing the FAFSA form, and I highly recommend anyone attend. It's super, you know, can be complicated and overwhelming, and they're all there to support and help. So that's a wonderful couple of days that people are there to assist. Moving on to athletics, Luke Riccio signed a commitment letter to play lacrosse at the collegiate level and would join the team at the University of Alabama Huntsville next year. So congrats, Luke. Awesome accomplishment. And our Huskies, the Varsity Boys, defeated Columbia High School 3-0 to win the New York State Class AA Regional Championship, and then they were unfortunately defeated by the defending state champions, Garden City High School, in the New York State Class AA State Semi-Final Game. I mean, they had an incredible run. We're so proud of them. They gave it their all, and they have so much to be proud of.
And we're going to actually invite them to our next school board meeting to recognize their accomplishments as sectional champions.
Yeah, I look forward to that. Angelina Lingiza on our varsity swim team competes at Webster High School November 20th through the 22nd for the New York State Championship in the 100-meter breaststroke. So we're wishing her best of luck. That's pretty awesome. And that concludes my update at the moment. I just want to remind everyone that next week, on Wednesday, the elementary, well, everyone has a half-day, and I know there will be lots of communication going out from Dr. Lee Adrick about that to all parents and families, but on Wednesday before Thanksgiving is a early dismissal. And before we move on to you, Dr. Will, Ben has a brief policy update.
Real quick, so we met this week, and we welcomed Gabby Elfon as a new member of the Policy Committee. We meet once a month, and we're beginning to review the policies in the 2000 series related to internal operations, and we anticipate having revised policies from that ready for your review by January.
Awesome.
Great.
Thank you. And Dr. Will, I will pass it on to you, because we have some very...
Anxious and excited people. How many of you have younger brothers and sisters in the elementary schools? Okay, good. So before we do this, Dr. Lee, you want to stand up there, because we have moms and dads in the room, and you want to remind people what's going to happen at elementary school this time? Every year, the day before Thanksgiving, we have a required rapid early dismissal. You may know or you may not, we do not permit elementary school students to ride the bus on that day, but we have a special expectation that parents need to be aware of, and Dr. Lee, we're going to be sending a notice pretty soon. You want to just tell them what that's about?
Sure, thanks, Dr. Will. So the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, we hold an emergency early dismissal drill, and we practice this because in a real emergency, when we have to dismiss 3,800 students in a timely way and ensure that each child gets to the right adult, we need to have really clear systems and procedures to do that. So we're going to be sending out a letter, both by email and text message tomorrow, to parents, just informing them of the timing of this happening next Wednesday, and also to share, as you said, Dr. Will, we don't provide K-5 transportation, so there's no bus transportation on that day. The reason for that, we can't be assured that there will be an adult at home to welcome a child, so we always want to make sure that there's an adult receiving a child. There's a new part of that procedure for K-5 parents this year, that is, we're going to be sending a QR code to every parent, guardian, and emergency contact that may play a role in picking up a child, so that when they come to school, they bring their QR code, they bring their photo ID. We scan their QR code, so we have a way to verify that the adult that's picking up the child is on the approved list to do so. So we're asking for parents' help as we test that system for the first time next week. Please, you'll get instructions, you'll bring your QR code with you and your photo ID. If you need to make any adjustments to the emergency contact list, so those adults that are authorized to pick up your child at school, please call your main office that's mentioned in the letter, we'll remind you of that, but call your main office before next Tuesday so that we can add that individual's name to the list of authorized adults. But as I said, we'll be communicating this in a letter tomorrow, we'll send it again on Monday next week. And we also use this, last point, to test all of our communication systems. So we'll push out email, phone, and text message to every parent, guardian, and emergency contact. It actually goes to over 40,000 points of contact, and we check to make sure that all those numbers and email addresses are valid, so that the system is working the way that it should. Last word, just want to thank the Harrison Police Department. They're going to have a visible presence on all of our campuses next week, as they do every day, but Wednesday in particular, because they're great partners to us in helping facilitate these drills. So we thank them for that and look forward to sending everybody off for Thanksgiving next Wednesday.
So moms and dads, keep your eye out for the message and the QR code. So now it's time for the thing we've all been waiting for. And I was struck the other day, when I stopped by rehearsal, I saw Lucy Nurnther, Shandana Nurnther, our teacher's daughter, here. And I was reminded that the last single day we were open before I closed for COVID was the only performance we had of The Little Mermaid, and we allowed that to happen even though we were getting yelled at. But I was always grateful that the cast got to perform. So we love theater. Those of you who don't know, your superintendent used to run a school of fine and performing arts, because I think the arts are so important. You have incredible teachers who are devoted to making you the best you heard about all the things they're doing. So we are very excited to have someone come up and introduce the program. Mrs. Test, I see you heading this way.
I will come on up.
Are you going to sing?
I am not going to sing. No, you don't get to hear that today. You will hear the children. So thank you all so much. You did a wonderful job, so I don't have to repeat all the ticket information. So thank you, Ms. Kozak. We are so excited to present to you this wonderful story, James and the Giant Peach. So this weekend, please come see our LMK Drama Club students take the stage, performing Roald Dahl's James and the Giant Peach Jr. The music is by Passick and Paul, who is the songwriting team behind The Greatest Showman, to see Roald Dahl's classic story of adventure, courage, and self-discovery brought beautifully to life. We have about 60 students in our cast, as well as 30-ish students on our tech crew, so it is a huge group, as well as several high school helpers who are coming down and being mentors and role models. So it's a really wonderful extension of the two programs coming together. Today, we have, for your listening pleasure, Stephen Davis, Dom Galatiados, I'm going to get it, Christine Heine, Gritika Fukun, Ariana Semcedin, Ayla Strempel, Ben Del Pizzo, and Cooper Genesco, performing a few selections for you. So ladies and gentlemen, please come face the stage. And as the back of their t-shirts say, this is one of our favorite quotes from the book, one of you turn around for us. Sometimes you have to face your fears to find your friends, and this story is all about finding courage, finding your friends, finding your group of people, and that's one of the things we love at the LMK Drama Club, is these children getting to really find their people, find their moment, and find themselves through theater. So we hope you enjoy a few selections. Start us off.
Right before your eyes, there might be sunshine or thunder, but we proceed. Right before your eyes, whimsy and wonder, what else would we need? We've got James and a giant peach that flies, a pack of actors all in disguise. So let that curtain rise, right before, right before, right before your eyes.
And Sponge, we'll give you a little tale of their sisterhood.
Thank you. Seems we lost nearly everything, sponges, everything. I mean, really, what have we got? You thought you could ride on the fruits of your dreams, but you couldn't. So what? You thought life would glide just like peaches and creams, but it wouldn't. It has. No paparazzi ask you to pose. You want a new yacht, you can't buy one of those. That's the way your new life goes, but in the end, you still got your best friend. And I've got you. You.
Yeah.
You.
Yeah.
Who could replace that Frankenstein face? You know that it's true. I got you. You got breath like goat, my newer.
You smell like a bloody sewer.
You are just the right wrongdoer for me. So glad to know you. All right, so you lost all you had, and though you had quite a lot, it's in tatters. Get over yourself. It's dreadful and sad till you realize you've got what still matters. What still matters?
My figure, my cheekbones, my radiant yave.
Voluptuous curves in my solid gold tooth. But the very scary truth is that she means the most to me. I love you, sis. So glad I got you. To laugh and to share as half of a pair. We've been and through thick, we'll stick to our shick. Always true to you. You. I got you.
And one of the things we love, as my bugs come join us, pass off microphones. If you are a sixth grader, raise your hand. Ben Del Pizzo. If you are a seventh grader, raise your hand. If you are an eighth grader, raise your hand. If you are an eighth grader who has been in drama club since you have been in the district, raise your hand. So for most of our students, this really becomes something that they find their friends, they find their pack, and they kind of stay here, which we love. And for those of you new, we hope you stick with us. All right, our last group will be singing Floating Along, our journey of the bugs. Our tallest and shortest, fresh air.
Well, the sky is clear and the sea is calm. There's nothing to do now but enjoy the adventure. Tally-ho, and away we go. Just catch this tune and sing it with me. We'll set our sail for nothing but sea. No place where we gotta be, so go. We're tumbling off where nobody's been. How true adventures always begin to go right on the tide. Bob and I dip below. No direction, a map is never better than drifting off without a plan. All we need is a song at the intersection where ocean meets the sky.
We're all gonna die.
Try to float along, floating along.
Floating along.
La, 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 floating along. What could go wrong? Singing a song.
La, 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 floating along.
Now all we've got to do is make some sails, fix a rudder, and we'll be across the English Channel in no time at all.
This peach will never make it to France.
The worm's right.
Who knows what monsters we're gonna meet? A tent on drag with mings on his feet.
A hairy scrump with a scary scream. Boop. Might wake up a slumbering scrunch.
Who could get mad and eat me for lunch?
If we do, we'll get through when we work as a team.
No direction, a map is never better than drifting off without a plan. All we need is a song at the intersection where ocean meets the sky.
Feels like I could fly.
Try to float along.
It's not a proper ship unless it's a flag.
And I left all my flags at home.
Here, take my extra bloomers, they'll do in a pinch.
You've got extra bloomers?
A lady always carries extra bloomers.
And away we go.
Floating along, floating along.
Blah, 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 floating along.
What could go wrong? Singing a song.
La, 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 floating along. Floating along.
Hands to the microphone, everybody take a quick bow. Thank you all so much. Our machines are... Great job, guys. Thank you. Thank you so much for coming. A little sneak peek of all the talent.
Can't wait to see the show.
Yeah, thank you, guys. We know it's late. We appreciate you taking the time to come.
Now go right home to bed.
Wash your hands first.
Wash your hands first, right. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so back to, have a great night.
Good night.
Back to the superintendent's update, so don't forget your tickets for James and the Giant Peach. Is the link on our website, Matthew?
It is, yeah.
It's on the LMK Drama Club page.
Okay. So we have a couple of other updates before we go to the agenda and do our business for the evening. Lisa, would you just briefly tell people how the University of Tokyo visit went? For those of you who don't know, we mentioned last time, we've been visited by lots of school districts who are studying some of the things that we do that are interesting. Byram Hills was here, most recently looking at our world language program, but I'm particularly excited to share what happened on this visit.
Thank you. So a team from the University of Tokyo came to learn more about our digital curricular resources and how we make curriculum accessible to all learners. They had the opportunity to visit classrooms, to talk with our teachers, and to really see some of our best practices in action. And I think their thank-you note really captured the spirit of what we were hoping, is that they would see really what our extraordinary teachers are able to do to make rigorous curriculum accessible for all learners.
Yeah, I was very excited too, and we are doing such good work influencing other people about how to do their work effectively. And on that note, I just want to give the community a few updates to some of the things that have been going on at the school level and at the district level. I was a facilitator at a recent presentation on AI, at the regional Westchester-Putnam School Boards meeting. And I want to just remind people of what I want you to think about when you think about AI. You can worry about kids plagiarizing, you can worry about kids developing inappropriate relationships with chatbots, and all of those are good worries. But what I want you to know as parents, your work hasn't changed, and our work hasn't changed because AI is here. AI are tools, and how those tools are used really is a determination of how well we help our kids develop their values, their moral center, the way they approach ethical behavior. And so while I am concerned about AI, I'm most concerned that we continue to lean in and help kids realize what it means to be principled, how you can use AI in ways that are valuable and not destructive. So in some ways, AI is just another amplification of how important it is to help students find the best versions of themselves. Also want to talk about some of the things that are going on that we're fighting for. I watched our girls' soccer team lose to Alberta's Magnus, which is a really fine team, but it has a very distinct advantage over public schools. Private parochial schools have the ability to recruit, to provide scholarships. They have no boundaries, so there are no limitations on how they recruit. And so I've been working with a group of 78 superintendents in my role this year as president of lower Hudson Council to change athletic competition across the state of New York, to make it fair for public and parochial schools. I'll be meeting with the Commissioner of Education tomorrow to further advance that initiative, and I expect that we will have some positive outcome in the very near future. I know that's extremely important to many students, but it's important to many of our kids. I've watched our girls' basketball team be unfairly defeated by the Ursuline School, and this is not a knock on those schools. It's just that it's not a level playing field when you get to go and recruit far and wide, and public schools work with the children that live within their community. So we're going to fix that problem. On a second note of activism, and I appreciate the board's support in all this, this room tomorrow night will be filled with 135 people, legislators, board presidents, and school superintendents. And this year, we are pushing, we always want fair funding, but we want something different this year. We want them to put a permanent structural fix to make sure that all 750 public schools across the state of New York are funded fairly. Last year, they began the study. We want them to complete that study now and in perpetuity. That is how we fix the problem. So I want you to know there's a lot going on that you don't see, and it's extremely important work. In the same way that we have a responsibility to share the good work that we do for students, we have a responsibility to make sure that the behaviors we engage in affect the culture that we live in positively. So I'm proud of the board, and I'm proud of the work that we're doing here to advance that. Having said that, I won't see anybody again before our Thanksgiving break, so I want to just give pause to say thank you for all of the amazing work that goes on in these six buildings every day for children. We have an incredibly dedicated faculty. I have an incredibly devoted leadership team who work 24/7. There is no such thing as a day off, even when there is a day off, so I thank them for that. And the seven individuals that sit to my right and left, who every day allow us to behave in a way that is principled and predicated on the idea that every child that goes to school here has value. So if you want to be giving thanks for something, let's all give thanks for that. That's my update for tonight, Madam President.
I appreciate that. And just to echo, because sometimes I'm so focused on conducting the meeting and the business aspect of it, that I would be remiss if I didn't echo your remarks and just say that I hope that everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving, however you choose to spend the time, and also just, you know, it's a kickoff to the holiday season, so it's a lovely time of year, even though we're approaching, you know, the colder weather. So yes, enjoy the time and some delicious food. And with that, moving on to the personnel report, I will take on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none, a certificated personnel, one resignation, two temporary assignment, SED clearance received, three extra... three, extra compensation appointment, SED clearance received, four, change of status, five, leave of absence without pay, B, non-certificated personnel, one resignation, two, regular appointment, SED clearance received, C, other, one, student, teacher, observer, SED clearance received. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report? Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to the administrative report, I'll take on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, approval of Harrison High School Debate Team field trip to Minneapolis, Minnesota for a debate tournament. B, acceptance of donation from the Harrison High School PTA. C, approval of CSE CPSE minutes. D, approval of CSE CPSE recommendation. E, approval of CSE CPSE annual reviews. Do I have a motion to approve the administrative report? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wait, sorry. Just going back a second. Any questions or comments? Because I have one brief comment. I just wanted to thank the Harrison High School PTA for their generous donation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to the finance and facilities report, I will take on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, treasures report, October 2025. B, 2025-26 appropriation transfers. C, approval of inter-municipal agreement with the town village of Harrison. Do I have a motion to approve the finance and facilities report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our next regularly scheduled business meeting will take place on December 10th, 2025, here at Lewis M. Klein Middle School. Do I have a motion to close the meeting? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Have a wonderful night.